And if you would introduce yourself since you're now on camera.
I will, I'm Lee Parasol, the director of the Fire Training Academy.
Right, and we're going to go over the budget for the training academy.
My apologies for...
Papers together here.
From Mark, he got tied up with some personnel issues. He's been making some... I'm going through some skin treatments, if I look a little funny.
We understand.
Yeah, that sun dammed stuff.
Oh, yes.
My teenage years, many, many years ago.
Yeah, nobody told us, did they?
Unless Mark changed anything, I'm not sure.
I do not believe so, no? This is the original that I have.
The whole budget in the original are level funded as requested from last year. We've not asked for any increases.
If we could go back to your goals, tasks, and measures, page one.
Yep.
You talk about tracking the number of students and programs and all of that. How do you do that now?
We keep...
Do you have a database?
We have a database.
You have a database.
And if somebody calls from a local department says, "John Smith has had classes there." Can you tell us which ones he's had and how long and what they were worth? And how many credits and how many hours was he there? We can look that up and say that he has been here for 12 classes in the last three years and a lot of hours. And we can give that a training value, a dollar value, which we do in our reports, eight-year-end reports, because there would be... There's a fee associated with those, any of those classes and programs that non-Cape Fire Service people pay. So we use that fee as well. We charge them if we work out to them, whether it costs for those people to train. So that's how we come up with that number of students and also the number of dollar value for them.
Now firefighter one and firefighter two, do you provide firefighter two training as well?
One-two.
One-two.
One-two. Years ago, it used to be one.
And then it was two. Now it's one-two.
And now it's one-two. And this year, it's two weeks longer than it was previously. And last year, it was a week longer. So it's three weeks longer than it was. It started out as eight weeks quite a few years ago, and now it's up to 15. Technology changes and the programs change and the state mandates different course materials to study and levels of training that they have to be proficient in. So it's grown over the years to get bigger and bigger and bigger.
Do many of the towns send any of their firefighters to Maryland? I can't remember exactly where it is.
From where?
To Maryland.
There are a lot have been. A lot of my staff have been there, including myself.
Where is it in Maryland?
What is the Maryland thing? I'm sorry.
What's it called? It's one of the... Seton, it's down near Seton College?
Yes.
Is it like a train-to-train?
It's a Cumberland Hill part. They do train-to-train programs for a lot of stuff, but they also do upper-level management courses.
Yeah, like executive training.
Fire officer training and stuff like that. And that's the kind of things we do. And some are sent, some go on their own.
Is it?
Generally, they tend to go on their own, take their own time. The department's not going to pay somebody to go down there unless they're in a staff position, deputy chief sometimes, and help get to go if they haven't been there before.
Okay, well, do you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. On the fire training ceremony that we were at, the graduation, I've been talking to a lot of people. It just seems that this has come up in conversations. Explain to me, those were students going now, were those paying students? Those were not fire staff at that time. They were... They had enrolled to receive the training to go to the next step, am I correct?
Yes or no? They are members of local fire departments. They have to be to come to us.
Right.
Statutes, regulations, and insurance, for insurance reasons, they have to be a member of the fire department so that they are covered under the fire department. What they are is either call or volunteer firefighters, covered under the department that sends them. And once they receive this firefighter-one-two training and pass hours and pass the state, three state exams, then they become state certified, which means they can now go on and take more courses from us and from the state.
What is the category? Somebody was mentioning a category, and you're saying one and two, and I'm not sure if it's the same or if there's a separate category. Is there a category of fire volunteers? Is there a volunteer?
There are volunteers, which is what problems, Thomas. But they are paid volunteers.
Yes, I was going to say, there must be some...
They get one check a year, a stipend. Don't hold me to the number, I think it's like $2,000. That's what they get, and they have to show up for everything that they possibly can.
Right.
They have to maintain somebody drills and everything else. Other departments coming up from Waltham East End, that way up to Worcester, call firefighters, they're on-call, paid-on-call. So they get...
Benefits, they get vacation, they're full employees?
No, they get none of that, no. No benefits, no money. All they get is paid per call.
Per call, I see.
So Darmouth still has some call department members, Dentist does not. As you come up to Cape, it gets less and less, and by the time you get to the upper Cape, there are none.
That's when they're just staff?
They're full-time paid firefighters. Firefighter-one-two is the basic recruit level that all firefighters, according to NFPA, should be trained to. The Cape and Islands, through the Fire Chiefs Association, has decided quite a few years ago that it should be mandatory that every person getting on a piece of fire equipment, at least in this county, in this region, should be trained to that level. And if they can't reach that level, they're not acceptable as permanent paid firefighters, call firefighters, or volunteers. So they're all trained to a certain level.
So that group of students were basically provided that education through... That was not something that their fire departments paid for. It's basically, that was a service that we provided.
Their fire department has to pay for their health insurance. They have to pay for all their turnout gear and their airbags and all the equipment that they use, their clothing, their uniforms that they get. So there is a cost to those folks just to bring them in the door. And that cost for turnout gear is about $5,000 and all that stuff, just to get them in the door. So each member is worth about $5,000 to a department right up front before they do anything else.
I have another question. I am told, and I try to clarify this, there are several fire departments that do not utilize the Fire Training Academy. And they will, and they have and will, send their firefighters to Stowe. And that includes travel overnight?
Those are departments that are contracted, contracts, union contracts.
Yes.
A lot of the... What happens, a lot of the members, like the people you saw here today, a couple of weeks ago, half of those will probably in the next few years end up being hired as full-time firefighters somewhere on the Cape. Some departments will still mandate by union contract that they go to Stowe and take their recruit class all over again, the same class, the same program, but it's a state-certified recruit training program. They get the same certification, again, that they get after they get through with us. When they get through with us, our students just took the written exam for certification. Once we pass that, next month, we'll take a non-fire practical exam with the state. If they pass that, they take a live-fire practical exam with the state. And they are certified by the state of Massachusetts as firefighter-one-two, basic firefighters, the same certification that they get at the state academy.
If they go through the fire academy, do they still have to get some sort of state certification that you're referring to right now? And could it all be done at one?
All the departments accept one mandate that they become certified.
Through the state certification?
Through the state certification.
So at some point, every one of these firefighters have to go to the site in Stowe and receive this training and certification?
No.
Okay.
The state comes to us. Like, they were here last week, or actually, the day they graduated, they took the written exam that morning. They take the state written exam. If they pass that, the state sends down testing people of their own to test them on their hands-on skills for non-fire things.
Okay.
Those who pass that section of it get the third test, the state comes back a month later and retests them again. So three months after they graduate from us, they become state certified, if they pass. There's no guarantee they're going to pass, but they're given the... If they don't pass a segment, they can retest on that for up to a year without having to take the class again.
Now, in the contract, in the union contract, it states that they are... It's written into the contract that they go to Stowe.
Correct.
Why is that?
It came about... Well, I can use my department, I came from 1975 when I started. There was no basic training mandates from the state anywhere on fire service, not like it was from the police departments. The unions on the Cape at the time, the union departments negotiated into contracts, basic recruit training, and at that time, the only place you could get it was at the state academy. They did that because they felt a need to professionalize the service. And those contracts that were done back then that way, which would be probably found and born in San Villas, Hyannis, Darmouth, and now some of the other ones have started to pick up on it. But it's maybe Chatham, I'm not sure about them, but those communities, the largest ones, still, because of that negotiated contract from way back in the early '70s or mid-'70s, are still under that contract, and it's never been taken out of their contracts.
And those are the local unions, the local of the Cape?
Correct.
So why has that not been addressed somehow? Because not only is it costing those companies of those towns more money.
Yep.
It is a service that can be provided here, and so why has that not been addressed through any of these negotiations? And what is the fire department? What are you, as the fire academy, trying to do to change the language in that contract when that is coming up for renegotiation so that you can make the case that that can be done here at a cost savings?
We are working at and have been trying to for quite a few years, working at getting... The state fire academy is not the certifying agency that certifies firefighters. There is another agency out there. I'll come up with a name, someone will come say it. It's actually in charge of it. And they do all the certifications. And when you go to Stowe and take that 13-week recruit training program, it isn't the state academy that certifies those people, it's the...
Is it NIPH?
No. No, it's not a pro board thing. It's the Mass Training Council, which is members at large, a couple of firefighters, some civilians, and some educators. I think there's eight or 10 on there. And since the training was set up in the state, they were by... I guess it's by stature. They are the only ones allowed to certify in the state of Massachusetts. It's being challenged now, and we have a letter that's going to be going out shortly in conjunction with a private training organization that teaches at this state who challenged it in Connecticut, and they won. They're large enough, they're a nationwide company, they challenged it in Connecticut, and they won. Because if you can show that you're doing to the same level, you have an outline that everybody in the state uses. Even if you come from Wisconsin and come in here, teach to that level and test to that level, then those people should be certified. We're working very hard at solving that problem. Once, if that becomes solved, that they don't necessarily have to be the sole certifying agency in the state, but any agency that's doing training of any kind, whether it be heavy rescue training or technical rescue training or fire service training or ENS training, that agencies who meet a criteria should be able to certify. Then we would meet that certification mandate by the state, and then it may give the fire chiefs and the town administrators and the selectmen the opportunity to say, "No, you can go here because you're getting certified just as you would over here."
So you're not equipped to give that final certification?
Well, we're equipped, because we do...
I know you're equipped, but you're not authorized.
We are not authorized by the state.
And that has been going on all these years, and it's never really been addressed or tried to, been worked out?
It's been challenged numerous times to no avail. It's a political football that gets thrown back and forth, and we always lose. Because they've, you know, the state agencies have more clout than do a small training facility here, or a training facility in Worcester, or the training facility out in the western part of the state, out in...
In many ways, it's a sort of a regionalized approach by going with your local training academies. To me, that would be a goal, is to get that authorization.
It is.
And then you have to... And what are you going to do to get that? I mean, what are the steps of lobbying, writing?
Right. And fortunately, we have one, possibly two outside agencies that have a lot of money and some very good lawyers on board, with proven case record in other states where they've challenged it and they've won. And so we're just piggybacking on along with that. We may be able to get some of the other facilities to piggyback. Right now, to be honest with you, we're really concerned about, you know, us.
Exactly. And to me, I think it's a loss of revenue because of this clause, not only to the towns.
They pay a lot of money.
It's going to hurt the firefighters in the ultimate end because somebody's going to have to, you know, we just got to maintain.
There's only so much.
And to here.
Absolutely.
Is the challenge in court, or is the challenge, or should the challenge be mounted at the legislature?
Or at the union level, which?
The union level...
At the union level right now, though, the issue is there's no fallback. So they can always say, "Well, there's nowhere else to go."
There's no place to go, you know? But there's no place else to go to get that certification training all in one big ball of wax. None of us, what we would...
You can give one step, but they still have to go there.
The hope, they still have to test through them, not necessarily there. If we have enough students, they come to us. If not, the students do have to go there. The hope is that we, like, we have those students, we ran through the whole program, those who survived, they made it, were tested for all their hands-on agility skills, right to the skill sheets that are mandated. And those who got to that point, they passed that, and they passed our written exams. Our written exams are computer-generated, just like the state's, out of the same material, out of the same books. We want authorization to, at that point, to say they have qualified. They've completed all the criteria necessary to be certified as firefighter-one-two, and we, as an agency, would like to certify them as that. And that agency's certification should be accepted throughout the state so that they can go to other programs and courses throughout the state.
I just have one question. If they go through the fire academy here, they have to take the test. They go to Stowe, they don't take tests, they're just automatically certified?
Oh, no, they still have to take the test.
They still take the same test?
They just travel then?
The thing that makes it good for them is...
What makes it different?
The difference about it is they go 40 hours a week. They have, they spend more times out in the drill yard doing hands-on skills, but they're tested to the same level that our people are. So we have to get it done, you know?
In a shorter period of time.
In a shorter period of time, for hours, because, you know, they really do all their hands-on skills on Saturdays, and they have 12 weeks of that, and it's about a 10-hour day from Saturday to Friday. You know, so, you know, they get 120, say, hours of actual hands-on skills. I mean, some of the skills are done at night, too, sometimes. You do night, you know, you do night stuff, you do major work.
So what's the difference in the total hours between you two, between here and there?
Our total hours for our program now is 219. And they're 13 weeks at 40 hours a week, so top of the head, with a 400, 500 hours.
Oh, okay.
It's almost double.
It's almost double.
But it's repetition of hands-on, carry a ladder, settle a ladder, down, pick a ladder, day in and day out. So it just becomes rote. So you just don't think about it, it just happens. And for that, it is a benefit, that, you know, there is no way that we could do that. Well, let's put it this way, we could do that, but fiscally, we could not do that.
And part of it, in the union contracts about that deal with either overtime pay to go there or straight pay, and certainly travel time and expenses, and the same would be true here, I would think, but probably at a lesser cost.
Sure. Yeah, but I wouldn't have to put them up at night.
Right.
A lot of them stay in local fire stations up there, you know, they come from the Cape, so it's not expensive. But they get travel time, they get meals, and the cost of their turnout gear and their equipment, the same as anywhere else. You still got to gear them up and make sure they've got the appropriate equipment to pass us.
You know, I think the service that's provided for the Cape is a great one, and...
It's the best one in the state.
I just, if it's the best one in the state, then it should be, somehow, the work should be done, and that should be a goal, to get that certification, because, you know, that authorization. Because in the long run, and that really is taking the time to educate each of these, not only fire houses, but going to the union officials and really pressing this issue, and also going to the state, your legislators. I mean, this is a process, and I'm not sure if it's being really diligently worked on over the years. I mean, if it's all this, since 1970s, that's been...
Well, I can tell you that the fire chiefs and town administrators and stuff in negotiation have tried for years to get that out of the contracts, to say that, you know, a certification is a certification. If it comes from the state of Massachusetts or it comes from Bonneville County, it's the same certification. Because they did state certify, that we should not have to send our people. And obviously, during the contract negotiation times, there's give and take, and there's give and take, and that seems to be one of the ones they always, "All right, we'll give you that, but we're going to take this." You know, it's a throwaway item, continuing, if they've been doing it for so long, it's like, you know, "All right, we'll give the union this benefit, but we want something over here." And it's always one of those that goes off the table first. And that's nothing that we can control.
No.
That's the town negotiators, who are negotiating.
I understand that's nothing you can control, but you can actually, but there is a level of participation and act of, you know, being proactive about it. And to me, I mean, just as, you know, this is, you know, several years now, I've been looking at this budget, and there's always some questioning of its necessity, and in the end, the assembly does. However, at some point, someone's going to say, "If it's being provided there, we can't do it anymore." It may not be this group, but it could be another group in the future if times get tough. And, you know, you're really going to take that seriously? I mean, as far as being able to...
I think that's a good point. I think what the assembly has been, or has a mind to do, and I think that's, we need to talk about this now. Because I don't think they'll say, "We're going to say, 'Your budget is zero, we don't think it's a good service.'" I think they think it's a good service. I think their concern is that you don't generate enough revenue. I hear this constant theme where you should be self-sustaining, basically, an enterprise.
An enterprise economy.
And so that's what, you know, and I think she was on the right track. Is there a way that we can market your service off Cape more so that we can generate more revenue there and maybe get some of those, you know, Plymouth or Bristol County departments to come here that actually may pay a little bit more? Or is there some sort of fee that we need to develop, however small, that we charge the towns, the local towns more?
Well, actually, I just heard the other day, actually yesterday, from somebody in Plymouth, that they're thinking, that they are building a fire training academy up there.
They're trying to.
I don't know how far along it is. And who's doing it? Is it the county?
The Plymouth County Training Association.
Plymouth County Training Association. Now, that's a group of firefighters?
Yeah, it's training officers and the fire chiefs.
And the various towns in the county?
From the county. The same kind of thing, they want to do a regional thing up there.
Do their own regional thing.
Part of realism's life, you know? Part of their reasoning is, is that they don't want to spend the money to come down to us.
Exactly, yeah.
Part of their reasoning is, is they don't want to have to send people to the state academy. Same reasons, they were doing it.
Right. I understand, but they're going to get stuck in the same situation, even if they do build it.
Yes, they are.
If, and I really do look at, like, this as part of the job. Those that are in charge of the Fire Training Academy have to figure out strategies of getting that authorization and not just, and being part of that discussion and being part of that argument. Because eventually, it's $300-plus thousand, people are going to say, "If it's being provided somewhere else, we don't have to do it."
Lee, who is the final arbiter that says...
I'm just giving you the reality.
What I can say to that is, is that call and volunteer firefighters are not allowed to go to the state academy. We provide that service here. It's the only way they're going to get it.
Right, and you provide that for free?
And so the state academy's free. There's no charge for the state academy, either, other than the housing and the travel costs and whatever. So the issue arises, if we don't do it, then the fire service on Cape Guard goes back to the '50s and '60s again. No basic training level for any of the firefighters. So when one town goes mutilate to the other town, and it's a simplistic thing, a 24-foot ladder has to be thrown to the roof, and a person from Worcester, a person from Hyannis gets assigned to do that, they know what they're doing. You go back to the '60s, and one might put it upside down, one might not know how to do it, one's never done it.
It's a very good argument. It's a very good argument. But it has to be something that you have to really craft and start pushing, because eventually, what I'm trying to, I'm not saying the merits of the academy or the purpose of the academy, or that are my feelings about the academy, but eventually, people are going to say, "If it's there, it's not here." And if you are providing that for a local volunteer fighter, where is the revenue that's being generated, other than being able to provide this service? I mean, where is the...
The revenues come from industry and charging off Cape people.
I think also, what she was saying is, we need to do a little more homework on exactly, when you say you've been working on kind of challenging this, you know...
How?
Certification grant. Where does that reside? We need to find out maybe if there's a piece of legislation somewhere that's awarded this granting authority to who, how do we maybe get that legislation changed? You know, tomorrow may be a perfect opportunity. We say, you know, "This is something we need to focus and we'll do a little work on," where, "Here's a new piece of legislation that says, you know, Bonneville County has the same..."
And you don't give manpower, and you don't give an effort of understanding and then making that argument.
Right.
That's going to remain in that contract forever.
I can tell you that we have worked, we have worked at it through conversations with union members who are part of that organization, through civilian members that we have that are part of that organization, through the fire service that's part of that organization, through the mass fire academy who's part of that organization in the same way that we are. The Community College, we've been involved with the Community College for a few years now, trying to get the ability for the Community College to, in their fire science program, have us be the firefighter-one-two organization. It does that. They take care of it. They do all the billing and everything else. We get a fee for doing our portion of it out of that student's...
You're trying to do that, it doesn't...
We've been working on that for probably seven years now.
But it hasn't happened yet.
Because they, now, there's, the state agency runs into the same wall when they get up there. And they know where to go, at the state level.
Right.
And to be honest with you, I don't know where it is. It's with that training council that they do not want to give up their authority for whatever reason.
Well, this is weird, somehow, those connections have to be made of those people so that they understand...
The Mass Maritime Academy hasn't been able to do that.
One other question, for those volunteers, for those firefighters and volunteers who would not receive training because the state doesn't recognize their status, those people also now staff the fire houses that have unions. And is that correct? So it's not just the smaller fire departments that rely on this type of personnel? Those graduates are from all... So if those firehouses that are part of that contract and participate, you know, and go with that, if they thought they were going to lose their adjuncts of this, of their volunteer that they're training, do you think that they would be a little bit more willing to listen and maybe do something about it?
Roy Jones has been fighting it for years. Roy Jones has been fighting it for years.
Well, you know, there's one group too. That I think we need to consider.
And he can't get anywhere either.
The other group to consider here are the town managers for the Cape, the town managers. They're the ones who negotiate the contracts.
Right.
You know, and I would think that particularly for those towns that have it in their contract, talking with that group of town managers and seeing how, how we can get it out. Because I think as we go down the road, it's a question of survival. You know, survival of the academy to make it so that it's relevant and more relevant in meaning. It is relevant, clearly, but in terms of the threats that are out there, like the Plymouth Academy and not having this designation.
So we have the Plymouth Academy, we have the Bonneville County Academy.
And we have the union contracts.
Maybe we should approach Senate President Murray, if she might have some interest in saying that these two academies should be, you know, have the ability to certify.
Nothing's gonna happen if you didn't take this up when you meet with her tomorrow.
This is all, this is all educating those who have some ability to do something about it. And if they are not educated and you are not pursuing this diligently, it's not gonna happen.
We have to take, we have to take a break here for a minute because yes.
Just a second for a tape change.